I'm going to make this announcement. We're waiting on a attorney to get here. So we're going to start the meeting at 6:05. It's now 6:05. I'm going to call to order the Regional Planning Commission Public Hearing for Thursday, September the 4th. And as we always do, we're going to start with the pledge. I'll ask Mr. Servon if he'll lead us in the pledge. Well, welcome everybody back as we start our new year for the September month and through the winter months. We always have August off. So I hope everybody had a great summer. So I welcome all the commissioners back also. It's good to see most of them here. I'll now go down to you, Sarah, for the roll call and determination of quorum.
Mr. Peterman?
Present.
Mr. Servon?
Present.
Mrs. Karcher is absent. Mr. Galvry?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Present.
Mr. Davis?
Here.
Mr. Jester?
Here.
So you have six present. You do have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Commissioners, you also see in front of you the agenda for tonight's public hearing. If there's no corrections or additions, I'll entertain a motion.
I move.
Then make the motion and Peter seconds it.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes.
Mr. Servon?
Yes.
Mr. Galvry?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Jester?
Yes.
So you have six years in favor of approving tonight's agenda?
Yes, sir. And I'll come right back to you for the introduction and public hearing instructions.
Thank you. This public hearing is being conducted for the purpose of giving the citizens of the county the opportunity to present testimony on the applications before the planning commission. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak. All statements are to be made from the podium at the front of the room or via WebEx once recognized by the chair. All testimony given shall be sworn or affirmed. For the record, please give your name and address. Copies of any written statements or exhibits used during the hearing should be presented for identification and inclusion in the record. The record will remain open for two business days following the hearing. For each application before the commission, the chairman will introduce the application. Then the applicant or representative will be given 15 minutes to present the application. Following that, those in favor of the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. Then those opposed to the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. When everyone has had an opportunity to give testimony, the hearing on the application will be closed. No decision will be made by the commission tonight. The commission will hold a public business meeting next Thursday, September 11th at 6:00 PM, at which time it will make a decision on the applications heard tonight. All information of record will be considered. A common vote of four members is required to make a decision. Anyone may attend the business meeting, but no new public testimony will be received. The public notice of this hearing was published on August 13th, 2025, in the Delaware State News. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you very much. I don't know if this would have been a change to the agenda. I noticed in the first round, we had the business meeting. There was an O on that for July 10th. Was that supposed to be on for approval tonight?
No, that'll be for next.
Okay, that's understood then. So we'll go right into our public hearing. First application on our public hearing tonight is CZ-25-03. Application number is CZ-25-03, Susan D. and John C. Nichols, Jr. Present zoning is AR, agricultural residential, low-density residential. Proposed zoning is BG, general business highway commercial. Area and location is 6.29 acres located on the north side of Walnut Shade Road, approximately 890 feet west of South Dupont Highway. Is there someone here to represent the application? I need you to come to the podium, Mr. Nichols, and give us your name and address, and I will ask you a question.
Good evening, Mr. Chair and fellow commissioners. My name is John Nichols, Jr. I'm located at 624 Bison Road, Dover.
Before you start, I'll have to ask you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is correct?
Yes, sir.
Thank you very much. Go right ahead.
I've got my notes here on obviously the rezoning application, a CZ-25-03. Respectfully, the staff recommendation report is inconsistent and wrong in many respects. First, the character of the neighborhood has changed to such an extent the zoning map should be changed. As the staff report recognizes, there have been four rezoning applications within the immediate vicinity of the subject property over the past 40 years. Like my application requested a rezoning from AR to BG, moreover, there is an industrial zoned property located immediately to the north of my subject property that touches that property. Second, the requested zoning classification is consistent with the comprehensive plan. As the Office of State Planning Coordination notes, the subject property is located in investment levels two and three according to the 2020 strategies of the state policies and spending and is inside the growth overlay zone for Kent County. This is an area where growth is anticipated in the near-term future. As the staff reports notes, the subject property is located within the Woodside Village area where neighborhood commercial uses like my business are encouraged. Third, transportation facilities, water and sewer, storm drainage systems, and fire suppression facilities are adequate to serve the proposed use either in existence or readily available. The subject property located on Walnut Shade Road is very close proximity to a busy intersection on US Route 13, one of our major arterial roadways in Kent County. Public sewer is neither necessary nor required for my intended use of the property. Water and fire suppression facilities are already in place. Critically, none of the agencies governing infrastructure requirements, the county's Department of Public Works, Kent Conservation District, DLDOT, or the Dover-Kent County MPO have any objection to the requested rezoning. Fourth, there is compatibility between the proposed use of the subject property and surrounding uses. As previously noted, there are a significant number of commercial use surrounding the subject property, and the proposed use as my business will in no way compromise the health, safety, or welfare of area residents. Indeed, I have the support of all of my neighbors. For all the foregoing reasons, I respectfully request your favorable consideration and approval. I also have two letters of neighbors, one across the street, one adjoining, that have been there since I bought the other property in 2006, in favor of my application.
All right, thank you, sir. And I'll hold stay right there. I'll ask the commissioners. Mr. Davis?
I don't really have a question. I just want to put it on the record. I think when you go west into the corporate limits of Woodside, there is a business on the corner, Woodside, Woodside Mini Stores Business and two other businesses. In addition to north of the strip mall, that's two doors over from your proposed zoning that you're in here for, is Dollar General. So the area, because I live down that area, so I know what goes on. I think what you're doing, I've noticed your business, you keep it nice, very professional, but the general business is moved in that area. So I just want to, is that accurate in your opinion?
Yes, sir, it is. And thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Mr. Servon?
Yes, I have a quick question. Just to clarify, your other property is the one on the direct corner to the lower left?
No, sir. My property would be to the east of that, the property right now for the rezoning. That's the current property that I am.
All right. Thank you.
Is that all? Any other commissioners? Thanks again for the presentation. Appreciate it.
Who do I give these to?
You give them to... Is there anyone else here in favor of this application? Would like to speak? Anyone else here in favor of this application? Third and final call, is anyone else here in favor of your application? I'll go to the negative side. Is there anyone opposed to this application? Anyone opposed to this application? Anyone opposed? Having said it three times, we will end... Have we had anybody on the phone?
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. I see no hands raised online, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. Let the minister show that the attorney is now here, and that we can get all of our legal issues taken care of.
Mr. Chair, I apologize for being late. Group one got me today.
Gets a lot of people every day. Next on our agenda tonight is our application number two, LC-25-15, CCZ-25-03, Susan D., excuse me, I'm one. Let me go on to the next one. I had a month off, so I'm not very sharp tonight. Next one on the agenda tonight is CZ-25-19. Application number is CZ-25-04, George A. and Amy A. Lewis. Present zoning is BG, highway commercial. Proposed zoning is AR, agricultural residential, low density. The area and location is 1.884 acres located on the east side of Iron Mine Road, approximately 880 feet north of Sandtown Road, west of Felton. Is there someone here to present this application? Someone here to present this application? You come up and the attorney will either swear or affirm you after you give us your name and address.
Can you give your name?
Charlie Albanese, my personal address, 1295 BB Road in Harrington.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to provide is the truth?
Ma'am, keep the microphone as close as you can. We can't hear you.
I'm sorry.
There you go. Thank you. I know you're nervous, but you're doing great.
I'm kind of a stand-in, actually. I kind of got this at the last minute, so...
Well, you'll do fine. You'll do fine.
All I know about this property is the homeowners bought it for cash a few years ago, and their realtor did not share with them that they would have problems reselling the house if they wanted to. And so they bought the property. They did a lot of fixing it up. They decided to retire and move south, which they have tried. They liked it. They would like to sell their house, but now they can't sell it for anybody to get a mortgage because it is own commercial. There used to be a glass, people who made something with glass, glass products of some sort. So they took it from a resident AR zoning to a commercial zoning, and now they are asking that you put it back to AR so they can get a mortgage. So somebody buying can get a mortgage.
Okay, thank you. Any commissioners have any questions? Seeing none, we thank you for your presentation.
This was very easy. Thank you very much.
You did great. Is there anyone else here in favor of this application would like to speak? Anyone else here in favor? Third and final call, anyone else here in favor? Is anyone opposed to this application would like to speak? Anyone opposed? Anyone opposed?
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to speak in favor or in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. Still no hands raised online, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much, and we'll be taking this application up next week. Now we go to our third public hearing application. Plan number and title is SL-25-03, Gerald Ridge, located on the north side of Fire Tower Road, 900 feet west of Turkey Point Road, south of Viola. Owner applicant is Behram Holding LLC, care of Mohammed, excuse me, on the last name, Ikwa. Ikwa, very good. Thanks for the help. 77 Case Ridge Road, Dover, Delaware, 19901. Engineer is Morris and Ritchie Associates, 111 Ruttmar Drive, Newark, Delaware, 19711. Present zoning is AR, agricultural residential. Levy Court District is the fifth, Mr. Sweeney. School District is Lake Forest. Fire District is Felton Station 48. Size of site is 57.85 acres plus or minus. They're actually building 85 single-family lots. There is wetlands in the area of 3.86 acres. Total areas within woodlands is 22.88. Relation to the growth zone is inside. Streets will be public. Water is tidewater utilities. Sewer is Kent County sewer. Is there someone here to represent this application? We could have your name and address, and you could be sworn or affirmed.
Sure. Charlie Barnett with Morris and Ritchie Associates, 111 Ruth R. Drive, Newark, Delaware.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Go right ahead, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. As already stated, here to present the project before you of Gerald Ridge. Hit many of the highlights already. It's about a 57-acre parcel that is currently zoned AR in the growth zone, behalf of both the landowner and developer, same entity, Behram Holdings, here tonight to present this byright project to you folks. 85 single-family detached lots are being proposed. Gives a density of 1.47 dwelling units per acre, which is well below the maximum allowed of 3.5. We are... Thank you. Just a couple of highlights here. We are proposing 1.2 acres of active open space, which is twice as much as the required amount. We are providing over 33 acres of passive open space. So over half of the property is going to be reserved as one kind of open space or another. And then the infrastructure, as we already talked about, will be public utilities. Project's located just out of Viola on Fire Tower Road. All of the surrounding properties are also zoned AR except for the two developments to the west of the property. Those are both RMH, and they are the Riverdale Estates and Countryside Mobile Estates Developments. To the immediate east of the property is a single residential lot. The property is bordered along the north side by Hudson Branch, which is a Blue Line Stream. Across that are several properties. One of the largest adjoining landowner is a proposed solar facility. It's already been approved, yet to be constructed. So looks like agricultural on the aerial imagery if you look at it, but it's already proposed to become a facility for that. And then a couple other lots that are being used for agricultural just north of the property. Here's an overall of the plan that will show some of the other highlights. As I talked about, it is Kent County Public Sewer. There is a sanitary pump station right about here where I've indicated on the plan. So we will extend gravity sewer up Fire Tower Road and into development from there. There's also very close to that, an extension of tidewater utilities, water main. We will extend that up Fire Tower Road and into the subdivision. Speaking of tidewater, we have also...
Sir, can you keep the mic up a little closer? We're kind of losing you a little bit.
I apologize. I'm going back and forth, sorry. In this area here, we have indicated an area for tidewater to put a holding tank. We do not know the specifics of that right now. It is not a requirement for the subdivision to have water, but owner does have an agreement with tidewater that they can put a water holding tank there for future use if they so want to. So that's why you see that area kind of set back away from the lots. Hopefully, everything goes through. You'll be getting a conditional use application by tidewater utilities when that time comes, but that is not part of this here right now. The internal streets will be all dedicated to DLDOT, so they will be public streets. They will be designed, reviewed, and approved by DLDOT, so they will meet all of the state standards for accessibility, fire and emergency apparatus. They will all have sidewalks on both sides of the streets. They will have ADA compliant crosswalks at all the intersections. We will also be providing a shared use path, which is a wider walking path along the north side of Fire Tower Road, and we will be tying in the internal street sidewalks in several locations. We're also planning to propose a sidewalk that meanders from this area along the perimeter, nice little kind of nature walking trail that you can be up against the woods. It will tie in at several locations to the internal street sidewalks so that there's plenty of accessibility for all the residents in the subdivision.
Can I ask if you agree with all staff comments?
We agree with all the requirements in the staff's packet. There are three recommendations that the staff has in there. We do not agree with all three of those. Be glad to speak at those at this time if you'd like. Two of those have to revolve around putting together a light district, and we do not have issues with that and would gladly be open to that if that's what the planning commission would like. There is a recommendation in there to both move the entrance location to the subdivision as well as provide a secondary entrance location. We are not in favor of doing that, and a couple reasons for that being it is our experience with DLDOT that they insist on a single access point as much as possible for projects, especially ones like this. This is very similar to a project that we're currently getting approved through DLDOT right now in Georgetown where we're off of a local road. That project has 239 dwelling units in it, and DLDOT is insisting that we are only allowed to have one access point for that project. We have, very similar to this, we have cul-de-sacs that are not too far off the road. We propose to have emergency access routes that wouldn't be fully used all the time, but it would have gravel underlayment under the grass that an emergency vehicle could use if something were to happen and there'd be something catastrophic at the entrance. And DLDOT has completely put a kibosh on being able to do that in the future and will not allow us to do that at any of the points we had proposed. So I do believe that that will not be something that DLDOT would entertain. This entrance here on the far west side of the property, I think they're either read it wrong or there might be a typographical error in this recommendation. I think it said it wanted a second one on the east side of the power lines, but I think it meant west. But this entrance here is very close to these two entrances. There are actually two entrances right here, one for Riverdale Estates and one for Countryside Estates. Estates. It is way too close for DelDOT to allow another entrance to be due to this road and the speed. They require entrances, you know, decision points they call them, to be at a certain pace so that you don't have confusion as you're driving down a road or it's too hard to pull out because there's other people trying to pull out at the same time. So I think that would be difficult. So once you take that away and you look at only having one entrance, as DelDOT, I would imagine will be all but requiring. I think the entrance we're providing is centrally located. It allows people on both sides of that power line right away to easily get to their homes and for emergency services and things like that. We have located two potential bus stop locations on the plan, one here and one here. Also where we have cluster mailbox being proposed and parking spaces. We sent a preliminary plan to the school district and told them of where we wanted to do this, and we got a positive response from them in the email. We provided that to planning staff as well, so they agree with those locations as well.
Just to be clear on the recommendations, your challenge is to recommendation number one, but you do not have any objection to recommendations two and three relating to the streetlight?
That's correct. Thank you. We will most likely be making, well, we will be making a slight change to the plan we gave before you after seeing the public notice. We were approached by the landowner to the east. Lovely woman Nancy Baker called us up and talked. She did have some concerns with how close their house is to the property line and their pool and some other things. So we took a look at the plans after talking with her on the phone, and these two lots, well, you can see on this plan that there is a row of trees here that give a good buffer between the two properties, but those trees end right about where that cursor is showing. So we have two proposed lots, and they're much deeper than they have to be to meet code requirements and for the houses that the developer plans to build. So we did tell her that we would pull those back lot lines in by 20 feet and create an open space strip that connects to the open space that runs along Fire Tower Road, and we would provide a privacy fence along that. That's what she had requested. So a slight modification to the plan, but just a little addition of open space there to accommodate our neighbors. We include two waiver requests in our proposal. Both of those did receive recommendation as for approval by the planning department, but if you wanted to run through those, I can real quickly. One is for street linkages. By code, I guess technically we should be providing street linkages to the properties to the north with Hudson Branch there, a significant riparian buffer, wetlands, floodplains, all these natural resources. It just didn't really seem to make sense, especially now that one is not going to be used for residential use. It's a proposed solar facility. And like I said, so we've requested that waiver. Hope you grant it as well. The second waiver requested was needing to buffer against agricultural uses. Again, the only space we don't have a buffer is against a future solar facility, but in Morsell, the reason we don't have a buffer there is because it's in Delmarva Power and Lights overhead power line easement. So we would be unable to plant trees right there. So we're asking for that waiver in that area alone. That's the gist of my original presentation. Be glad to answer a question.
Yes, I got a couple of questions. Being an active member of the Felton Community Fire Company, the chiefs had looked at this, and we always have a problem when there's only one way in and one way out.
Okay.
Especially if we had a house fire back on the northwest side, and at the same time we had a wreck in the main entrance, we would not have access to be able to get to those situations, especially, you know, with the way things go today. You never say never.
Okay.
So looking at that, and you talked about the cul-de-sac, the far western, about being close to other entrances. We'd certainly like you to see if that couldn't happen. If nothing else, a stabilized access out from that cul-de-sac to the roadway and actually mark that off as a, you know, emergency accident. Have an ox box on it or something like that.
I like that idea, I really do. I would be glad to, I would be glad to commit that we would try to do that, that location. I just cannot guarantee that DelDOT will approve it. Unfortunately, at the end of the day, it's their say.
Well, we want to go on record as saying what we say. But the other thing is, I did survey work for a long, many years of my life, and we always had very hard time going through DP and L right of ways, whether it be driveways, roadways, and all like that. Do you already have clearance with Delmarva Power that you can build this road?
We don't have communications with them specifically for that. However, we did provide copies of the easement agreement with Delmarva, and it states that there is no complications for doing that. They only, as far as, I'm not the attorney, I'm not a lawyer, so I provided the documents, and you're willing, more than willing to review those. But my understanding, how it was explained to me, was that the encumbrance to the landowner is they can't build an actual structure, a house, inside that easement. But I believe surface improvements are allowed by those easements.
Yeah, we were actually two years getting a driveway, just a driveway across, back in, off of South Bowers Beach Road back where they had the major power lines.
Okay.
And they were very complicated because a lot of times you wouldn't even answer your calls.
Okay.
And can you guarantee us, or whatever it is, that you have the permission or supply to serve it? You have that, Sarah?
It's, we did receive communication from DP and L late yesterday.
Okay.
That they do have, they've got a permit process to be able to-
Sure.
-surface across.
We've done that in the past, yeah.
So I would just suggest that the permit for DP and L will be approved prior to final plan approval if we can pull that off.
I would imagine we would need that for the record plan.
Yeah, because it could end up being two separate developments if you have to open it at a letter entrance and you can't go across.
Absolutely, absolutely. That's fair. I don't think that will be the case. Again, I'm not the lawyer, I'm just regurgitating what I was told, but I think, I think it's acceptable response to make sure we have that worked out before record plan.
Yeah, and make sure you do, and you have till the end of what, Tuesday?
No, he wouldn't have the permit by then. He would need preliminary plan approval, then he could go to permitting with DP and L.
I mean, because that could be a very, very troubling point.
And he's got two years to get to record plan.
Again, the lawyer for the project, who unfortunately is not here tonight, but he was very confident that that would not be an issue, given the-
Good luck with DP and L, especially communicating.
Yeah.
Any other commissioners have anything? Mr. Mills?
Yes, I have one. We put safety first on everything, and DelDOT, we go by what they want done in these developments, go by what soil conservation wants. We go, get everything done except one thing. How are these kids going to get loaded on the bus? I'm a bus contractor. I know all about these developments and how we're picking these kids up, and right now, the only way these kids can get picked up is out there on Sinclair Road and Fire Tower Road. I don't care what Lake Forest said, what they want, but I'm telling you, it's not a safe place. How are you going to get a bus in there? Go back to that back part where you pointed out, there's going to be a bus stop.
Those streets are, will be accessible-
We're not talking about what the streets are. We're talking about a bus going in off that road and picking up these kids and doing it in a safe fashion. And what a safe fashion is, is you go on Sinclair Road, I lost my computer. Put it at the end of, now I can't see it. Sinclair Road, and that where it joins up with that Milton Road. A circle should be put right there in order for the buses to go in and circle around and pick up all those kids, and those cars have room to stop and not out on Fire Tower Road.
All I can tell you, sir, is that we gave the plans to the school district. We talked to the student services supervisor. He reviewed the plans. He was appreciative of the two bus stop locations that we put on there.
Well, he don't know what he's talking about.
And that would be acceptable for him. I, yeah, I-
Not going to prove anything, that can't consider these kids first to get them picked up in a safe manner, and I know, because I'm going in developments right now, we've got the Dogwood Meadows down in Milford, got a great large circle. We just go right in, circle right around, and come right back out on the route. That can be done in here. The trouble is, you want to jam up every house there is you can on these properties.
So forgive me, if you could, what exactly is your proposal for that to happen?
I can see it on this computer, I've lost it here. I can't see it up there, but on the Sinclair, on the road that's going off of Fire Tower Road, yeah, come down to the Fire Tower Road. When Fire Tower Road, off Fire Tower Road, you're going in on, what's that road name there? Sinclair?
Yeah.
Sinclair, right there, where it intersects. There should be a great big circle put there in order for that, them buses to go in there and just circle around and come back out.
There's, there's two bus stops you have on there. Is that for Dart buses and others, or is that for specifically?
That's for anything. I mean, we checked it with the school district, but they could be used for anything here. If I, if I can, while you're looking for that, I do have, I no longer have control. I was going to go to the next slide. I think I have an enlargement. Okay? There we go. So here is the, here's an enlargement of the one active open space where we have a tot lot. As you can see, this is also providing some pull-off parking spaces as well as the cluster mailboxes, and we are also proposing for that to be a bus-
That's on Dickerson, correct?
I beg your pardon?
That's on Dickerson Court.
Uh, yes, yes. So that gives a place for parents to park their cars, get off of the street, wait for the bus to show up, kids to get on the bus. It's a good centralized location.
Where is that on the map? I can't figure that out.
Uh, can I go back with this? I would have thought that would be the back button. Perfect, thank you. So the one I just showed you was right here.
Way down there. I mean, you gotta go in, and how they gonna go around where, that's her?
Well, the school bus would come in this way, and they would make a loop, and they would stop. And then they would come up here, and there's the second bus stop, and they would make a loop.
No, no, that's, no, that's not, no, it don't work that way, no. Delaware will not allow those buses to go in there and do just what you're saying. Sure you on that.
Do you have a letter from the school district?
I do, I have an email, and I provided that to planning staff when we got it. I can circulate it again.
Maybe we could have that forwarded to us next week, Sarah?
Do you have that one, Sarah? Sorry, I think you, I think it was-
I believe we do have it. It should be in your packet, but we'll double-check it and make sure you have it for next week.
What you got, Mr. Mills?
That's all, thank you.
Anybody else, any other commissioner? Mr. Garvery, anybody? Darren here, anybody? Thank you, sir, for your presentation and for your understanding and your patience with us.
Appreciate it, thank you all. Have a good night.
Is there anyone else here in favor of this development of Gerald Ridge? Anyone else here in favor of this development? Come to the mic. Third and final call. Anyone else here in favor? Is there anyone opposed to this development? Anyone opposed to this development? Third and final call, anyone opposed? If not, we'll be taking this up next week at our business meeting. Thank, oh yeah, forgot the phones.
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to make comments in favor or in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. I see no hands raised online, Mr. Chair.
Okay, then we'll be taking this up next week. Plan number and title is SL-25-04 Ellery Farm located on the northeast corner of South Dupont Boulevard and Twin Willers Road southeast of Smyrna. Owner and applicant is Patricia E. Gibbs, Dawn R. Ellery, Gwen D. Renadus, and Robin A. Silverman of 3431 South Dupont Boulevard, Smyrna. Engineer is Morris &amp; Ritchie Associates, 111 Ruthar Drive, Newark, Delaware. Present zoning district is RM. Levy Court District is the first, Ms. Maston. School District is Smyrna. Fire District is Citizens Home Station 44. Size of site is 81.978 plus or minus eight. It looks like the density will be 4.32 units per acre. The streets are public. The water is artesian water. The sewer is Kent County Sewer. Is there someone here to represent this application? Please give us your name and address, unless you're an attorney.
My name is Jonathan Content on behalf of K. Hovnanian Homes, 2499 South Dupont Boulevard, Suite G, Smyrna, Delaware.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, sir. I did bring a printed-out copy of what will be up here. Would you guys like me to pass it out beforehand? Does anybody need it?
So when you get back to the mic, go ahead with your presentation.
I do have a presentation which we're going to present, or I'm going to present. I just want to thank you first for the opportunity to bring another project to Kent County, working with the commission on the rezoning, which we did last year, as well as the levy court and the planning staff has brought us here tonight, and we're ready to move forward with preliminary plan. A lot of the information that you've mentioned about the site, I won't go over again just to save time for everybody, but I did want to show its proximity to major travel routes, which would be Route 13 to the west, Route 1 to the east. And then this is a screen capture out of the county's comprehensive plan, just to show that we are within the growth zone. And then this just shows the property. We did get a wetland delineation done, and it was approved by the Army Corps of Engineers just to show you where the wetlands are on site as well as the Blue Line Stream that's on site. And then since we were here last, we have, K. Hovnanian has closed on the property. I do have our closing attorney here as well as the attorney who represents three out of the four sellers. So if there are any questions about any proceedings up to this point, they can come up after we go through the presentation, and you guys can ask them any of the questions that you have at that point. So approvals to date. We got rezoning, and then we moved on from there. We created the sewer district as required as a part of the preliminary plan application, and that was approved earlier this year, actually right before the summer. And we do have an approved TIS, which I believe is attached to your packet. Here's our jurisdictional determination from the Army Corps of Engineers. So we'll move on to our proposed plan. We are proposing in this area, and we rezoned it for what the county calls high-density residential. We are not proposing to use all 10 units per acre that we are allowed under that zoning. We are, as you read off, using a little over four and a third units per acre. We're looking at doing 354 town home units in this area. And I won't read this, but just to remind everybody, the governor has acknowledged that we have an issue with housing, with affordable housing, if, with, for first-time homebuyer housing. Kent County is certainly not exempt from that problem. And so in conversations with some levy court commissioners as well as others up and down the state, one of the things they ask us is how can we bring the cost of housing down? And the answer is higher density. And that's exactly what executive order number four from the governor discusses, and that's what we've talked about with a lot of other planning commissions throughout the state, municipal, county level. This is what a lot of people are moving towards because it makes the homes more affordable when you can fit more units in to spread some of those land development costs across more lots. So here's a site plan, which I believe you guys have a copy of. This is the rendered site plan, and it does show pretty much any of those areas that you see green trees are areas that are wetland or stream, and we will not be impacting those. Our plan does not have any impacts, so there will be no wetland permit required on this design. And then I wanted to go into some of the product that we'll be building, and you can actually see these down in Milford, just south of the hospital, the Windward Grove community that's there. We're building these right now. This is what our proposed product is. Of course, by the time we get to all approvals and land development is to the point where we can actually start constructing, our product may be different at that time. We'll probably, that's probably about 18 to 24 months from now. But this is an example of a 20-foot- and land development is to the point where we can actually start constructing, our product may be different at that time. We'll probably... That's probably about 18 to 24 months from now. But this is an example of a 20-foot town home product that we're currently building in the city of Milford. And I wanted to show what our typical building envelope will look like. And this is important as we get further into the presentation. We talked about some of the staff's recommendations. But I also wanted to show the offsets that... Or the distance that we'll be using for the driveways. We intend that people will be able to park a car in the driveway, as well as park a car in their garage. And then our plan, which we'll go over after this, our plan does include some overflow parking. For the first staff recommendation that I wanted to come to, it was recommendation number two. The staff recommended a crosswalk for Twin Willows. We have no problem with that. But of course, that is a Del Dot road, so any striping or signage or anything that happens on there will be up to Del Dot. We can bring that up with them. And if they have no objection to it, we can certainly put that in. But just wanted to remind the commission that the jurisdiction for what happens with striping on Del Dot roads lies with Del Dot. The internal streets will have two different right-of-ways. You can see a typical right-of-way here, 50-foot and 60-foot. And of course, all of these streets are public. They'll all be Del Dot streets. And then this is the parking diagram that I wanted to talk about. All of those, and it might be a little bit difficult to see, but all of those highlighted, magenta-colored areas are off-lot additional overflow parking. One of the issues that we typically see in town home communities is that if you do not have overflow parking like this, there's not enough parking. So in addition to the garage that they'll have, the driveway that they'll have, we do have overflow spots. And as you can see, the required amount of parking is 708 per county code, but we're intending to supply 847 throughout the community. And that brings us to staff recommendation number four. There was a request that in this center section, that we put in alleys. And what we've found through all of our communities is that none of our buyers want alleys. Particularly on town homes, your lots are not as deep. If you put an alley in the back and you put your driveway in the back, you now have no backyard. And most people would prefer to have a backyard to a front yard. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that in the county's code for streets, one of the design criteria, not necessarily criteria, but the goals or objectives, is to reduce the amount of impervious coverage. If we put alleys in here, and I did not have an opportunity to mock this up to get exact square footage, but I did measure roughly where the alleys would need to go, we would add over 42,000 square feet of impermeable surface to the project, which none of us want to do. That will impact whether or not you can infiltrate. It will certainly impact the cost of the community because now we're adding significantly more asphalt, sub base, and all of that. So as we start... As we talk about this trying to be a first-time homebuyer community, we just keep adding cost when we add those features to it. And like I said, our buyers don't want alleys. They don't want rear-loaded units. And if we do put alleys in, we'll have to continue to reduce the number of lots so that we actually have a place for those alleys to outlet to the public streets. And when we first... When we drew our first iteration of this plan, I think we were somewhere around 332 lots. And the county said, "Can you get any more in?" And so we went back. We looked at the spacing between buildings that the county code requires. And we were able to get more units into this plan. So we're at 354, but as you could see previously, far shy of what we're allowed per unit for this zoning. So as far as that recommendation goes, we are not in favor of doing that. And I ask kindly that you would not recommend that as something or make that a condition of our approval. And moving on, I should have highlighted it in a different color than blue, although it looks a lot better up there on that screen than it does down here. We do have a lot of open space. We have a good amount of active open space. If you look at the blue line around, that is our proposed walking path, as long as the multimodal path that will run across the front that Del Dot's going to require us to put in. All of it connects. The green area, we're going to do sidewalks on both sides of the street. So that will be all over. There's going to be a lot of interconnectivity for pedestrian traffic. And so, planning staff, their number-one recommendation as we look at this, because this was a good place to show it, that right there is the pump station, the proposed pump station. That's what works for gravity for this site. And the first recommendation was a landscape buffer around that. We're good. We can do that. That is not a problem. We prefer not to see them also. So for staff recommendation number one, we can do that. Staff recommendation number five, and actually I'll jump back quite a bit here. Staff recommendation number five was to sub parcel or subdivide this portion to the north and remove it from the property. And that presents a couple of challenges for the future. And that would be this section right here. First of all, there's a blue line stream there. So if you're going... It would not be advisable to try to build a road across that to connect it to any use. If we did subdivide that parcel and make it a separate parcel, it's now landlocked. And there's no way to get to it. And there's no... There isn't necessarily a good use for that area. A decent amount of it is wetland. And the open field area is overgrown. And our proposal is to leave it a part of the community, leave it alone, not develop it, and just let it to continue grow as wetland and new forestation.
Do you know approximately how big those are?
Um, yes. It's about 15 acres, that portion up there.
Thank you.
Yep. So we do not want to do that. Like, jumping back to county code, if you look at chapter 187, where it talks about forestation and woodland preservation, that's a prime candidate to just leave alone and not touch. It also provides a nice buffer, not necessarily for us, but for the mobile home park that's to the north of us. That whole area provides a buffer from the noise that you would hear from Route 1. And certainly, if that were ever to be developed, that buffer would go away. And jumping back into our presentation, we have designed a mostly centralized amenity center. This sits right in the center of the site. You can see it on the plans that you have there. Right now, we're proposing a sports field on the northern side, two tot lots, as you can see there. The idea is that we would separate it ages 2 through 5, and then 5 through 12, which is a typical division line for the manufacturers of this equipment. A gazebo, and then the dog park would actually be split. And so you can see a faint line down the center there, where you would have a small and a large dog park, one on each side. So we put all this right in the middle of the community and thought that would be a great idea. And it would work out roughly equal distance to everybody else. And Mr. Mills, this one was for you. We talked to Smyrna School District and we said, "Hey, look, we've got a plan for you." Our idea is that you would come in off of 13, come over Twin Willows, drive in. This central location is right in the middle of the community. Drive around. There's a pickup here. Plenty of parking, since a lot of parents like to park and sit with their kids in the car before they get on the bus, which, as we know from other subdivisions, means people sit at the entrance, which does not work out very well. So the idea was that we would use this area and then they can just drive out and continue northbound on 13, which in that area is a divided highway. No crossover, so they're going to have to come out and go north anyways. And so we sent that to the school district. Here's a copy of their email. It did take a little... It took several months. At some point in reaching out to them, they switched transportation supervisors and didn't tell anybody, didn't pass anything on. But we finally got in touch with them on July 22nd. Not only did she send this email back to me after I attached a copy of this plan, which you see right there, but then she called me. We talked through it. And she said that's one of the best plans that they've had because most of the time, they're left with subdivisions built the way that they're built, and then they figure out how it works afterwards. I do want to note, though, that the county staff recommended on number three... Recommendation number three. So initially, we thought that this would be a one-way street so that there wouldn't be the possibility of opposing traffic during pickup. County staff has recommended that we make that a two-way street. And the biggest reason for doing that is if you look at the site here, if that's a one-way street going out, then when people come in, they're going to have to drive around the loop and do that. And they thought that it would be better to have two-way street there so that people could come in from either entrance and get right to the back instead of having to drive around that loop. I'll leave that up to you guys. If you want us to do a two-way street, it's easy to change. If you want us to leave it as a one-way headed west, then we can leave it at that.
Mr. Mills, why he's on that, would you like to comment on what he just said about the buses?
I would like to say, congratulate you and God bless you for putting these kids first. Without an ordinance in our code that says you have to do it.
Right.
I thank you very much for it because that's exactly what we need in every development. And if a developer can't decide to put one of these in to accommodate these kids, how they're getting on and off these buses, they don't need a developer.
Sarah, you made a comment, sir, about being a two-way street instead of a one-way street. And I can understand people having to go the extra thousand feet around to get to wherever their house is. Would you like to expand on why you said that?
Honestly, just because it seems more intuitive to the people who live in the community. I... So the staff made the suggestion. And I think I'm with Jonathan, whatever the planning commission prefers.
The only consideration, and maybe instead of making this conditional, you can tell us what you want us to do. But the only thing that... And M.R.A.'s our engineer, I think Charlie is right back here. The only concern that he has is before we would commit to changing it to two-way, is if you look at this, this street is not straight across. It angles up just a little bit. And his only concern is whether or not we can make the radius there for connecting. If Del Dot says we're good, then it's not a problem. If they say we're not good, then we would not be able to comply with that. But I'll leave... If you want us to pursue a two-way, just let us know and we'll do it.
Would that street be the same as the other widths in the development? Or would it be like the main entrance where it comes in and it's wider?
So if you... Let me back up a little bit and see if we have a better plan. If you look at this right now, this main street coming in is a 60-foot right-of-way, and then it narrows down to a 50 around that loop. We could make that 60 all the way across.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
Let me write that down.
I assume all the commissioners are in agreement with the two-way street being 60-foot wide? Very good. Mr. Peterman?
I want to comment you on that bus stop too, for pickup the kids.
Thank you.
You're one of very few, if not the one, that does that or did that or suggested that. Thank you. That's been a real thorn in the flesh here.
Thank you. I have heard it before. And we're very good at learning. And not just from planning commissions, but we're in these communities for several years as we're building them out. And when people see us, they recognize who our team is on-site. And they do not hesitate to tell us what's working and what's not working. And we try to take that feedback and incorporate that into our next plan to see if we can make it better. And this design of having a central amenity with a loop around for a bus, this isn't the first time we've done it. And certainly, unless there's some site constraint, why we can't do it, it won't be the last.
While you're on the center of the development, you talked about the sports field and the two dog parks.
Yes, sir. Yeah, this will all be maintained... All open space will be maintained by a homeowners association.
The sports field would be like a multi-use for whatever they decide to do with it.
Yeah, it will be whatever they want to use it for. I think when we were going back and forth with county staff, they wanted to see some more definitive use for it. So our plan, I believe, includes soccer goals, one on each end. But it could be used for whatever they wanted to use it for.
Thank you. You've been prepared for tonight, haven't you?
It's been a long time coming. So then we'll move on to the waivers. So there are two waivers. The first one is from street linkages. And the big reason, as the staff pointed out in their plan, is that... And I turned on the wetland layer here so you can see. There's a wetland pocket right there. There's a blue line stream that runs through it. But to the north, where that pump station is for the mobile home park, they do have a street stub. Of course, Kent County code says if there's an existing street stub, you've got to connect to it. If there isn't one every so many feet, you got to butt one. In this case, we asked for a waiver from that so that we wouldn't have to disturb the wetlands and build a bridge across that. And the county staff agreed with that. So here's a copy of their paragraph for approval. And then the second one is related to our walking... Our nature trail around the stream and the wetland area. If you look, I highlighted in red the areas where we impede upon that stream buffer or the wetland buffer. And as the county staff pointed out, we are not proposing any of that goes into the wetland. It's just within that 25 or 100-foot buffer. And that represents about 1,100 feet of a nature path that we intend, again, as we showed on an earlier slide, that would connect all the way around and just be a nice scenic walk through that area. And fortunately, in this case, the staff also agreed with that, and they're recommending approval. So with that, I've got Bob Penza here with us, as well as Gary Dodge. If you guys have any questions about-
Before you finish, I'm going to open it up to the commissioners if they have any questions on you. Does any of the commissioners here have any questions for the design? Very good. You did your homework.
Thank you very much.
You got any, Peter? Mr. Garvery?
Actually, it's just a curiosity more than anything else. Since we're talking about low-cost housing and increasing density to make that more affordable, I'm just curious as to what the average cost of these homes are.
They will have to be bid out at the time that we go to construction. We intend for these to be first-time homebuyers, not necessarily what is considered by Delaware code affordable or by federal mortgage qualifications affordable. But I think right now, we're anticipating them to be somewhere in the low 3s, which is consistent with other town homes in Kent County.
Thank you.
Are the homes going to be on concrete slab or foundation?
They'll be on concrete slab.
So in-
Yeah, there won't be a crawl space and there won't be a basement.
I noticed you have mostly six house clusters and there's a couple fours and a couple sevens and all like that. I assume they're not sprinkled, but they'll be just individual alarm systems for each structure?
Yeah, so they won't be sprinkled unless, you know, as you probably know, we have to offer that as an option. If they elect to do that, then we'll put it in. We have a very low take rate on sprinkler systems throughout the state of Delaware. And primarily, especially in a first-time homebuying community, it adds a significant cost to the house, which a lot of people look at and they say, "Well, you know, if there's a fire and the sprinkler goes off, the house is destroyed anyways." All they really need is a decent smoke detector or CO detector to get them out of the house. And so we don't see a very high take rate on that, but of course, it will be offered.
I can understand that because I know Mr. Davis used to be past chief in Federica Fire Company. And the sprinkler's been a hot topic over here for many a month now or many a year or so. And it's a hard thing to maintain it in the wintertime to make sure it doesn't freeze. Unless they're dry stand pipes.
So we had an issue a couple of years ago with one that... A condo building that we did actually in Maryland, where after we turned it over, the homeowners... And a condo building, separate from this, but the same scenario could arise. The homeowners, for whatever reason, elected through their condo association to not run the heat in the open space where the elevator was, which was also where the main feed went up through for the sprinkler system. And it broke on multiple floors. And we got to rebuild several condos. So there's a major reason to not use sprinklers. And our buyers don't typically go for it.
You have a great fire company up there anyway. Station 44 runs them.
Absolutely.
So once again, you've done your homework. I thank you. So you have somebody else that wants to talk a little bit?
Yes, sir.
You had your 15 minutes, you know. Does he have much he has to say?
I've told... I know he's an attorney, so I said, "Look, you get this much time."
Okay, we'll let him come up. And I assume you're not an attorney?
I am an attorney.
You are an attorney. All right. Okay.
Robert Penza, and I'm from Wilmington, Delaware. And I just want to make a few comments on the slide that you saw about the deed that was recently recorded transferring title.
I really think we're beyond that. Because we're just looking at the site plan and all. What's the commissioners think about that? I don't think we might have to... We don't have to get into that at all. I mean, that's already been settled and done like that, and there's no need to talk about anything else with it.
Yeah, I just wanted to... Just didn't want there to be any confusion that could come up in the public comments.
I think if they have any comments, they would probably work directly with you if there's things still going on. Because we're only here looking at the site plan and how it's going to be built and things like that. So I thank you for coming, though.
You're quite welcome. Thank you.
Is there anybody else here in favor of this application? Anybody else here in favor and would like to speak? At least it wasn't their phone, I guess. Give us your name and address, and you could be either sworn or affirmed.
Hi, my name is Gwen Rinaldi. My address is 1623 Madeira Avenue, Jenkentown, PA.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes. Yes. I just want to say that I am here in favor and support of the developer's plan. I represent myself and my two sisters who own 50, who were the, we inherited 50% of this property, and we are excited about the opportunity that the builder is going to provide to the community.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I liked your speech. Very nice. Anybody else here in favor of this application would like to speak? Last call for anybody else in favor.
If there's anyone that's joining us online that would like to speak in favor of this application, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone. Okay, Mr. Dion P., are you raising your hand to make a comment or not? If you'd like to make a comment, just, okay. You can unmute your line, give us your name and address, and be sworn in by our attorney, please.
Hello. My name is Dion Passlakler.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Ma'am, do you have an address?
Yes, I live at 188 Markham Court in Twin Willows.
Thank you very much.
So I have a couple of questions. So I live in Twin Willows, so my neighborhood's going to be affected as well as the neighborhood next to us, which is Spring Meadows. And the biggest concern that I have is the traffic. There are tons of accidents that happen.
Are you in favor of this, or is this opposite?
I have questions. I ask, I'm asking questions. I didn't get an opportunity to ask questions.
Ma'am, if you would just, there's really, so it's usually for or against, and I think your questions would be best served if we did it in the opposition. So if you could just wait a minute, and you'll have an opportunity, and you've already been sworn when we get to the next set, if that's okay.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, we're going to go over to the opposition now. And you've already been sworn and affirmed, so you're the first one in opposition to the development.
I've been fed.
It's not that I'm opposed or denied. I just have questions. Like I don't, I'm not opposed or approving it. I just have questions.
Now's the time.
Just so we're clear.
Now's the time to state those questions.
Okay. So the traffic in and out of this neighborhood, we are already combined with Spring Meadow, where we have a light on one side, we do not have a light on the other side. The light where we have, on the side where we have the light, the light going in and out on either side of the highway lasts a total of like four seconds. With the increased population that's supposed to be on the other side of Twin Willows Road, how is that going to be addressed?
Well, I believe you're talking about a Del Dot issue. None of the engineers or anybody like that is going to talk about light cycles or anything. So I would talk with your local representative or senator and get answers through that. Or actually, could they get any kind of answers like that, Sarah, from our planning department? That would be a Del Dot, wouldn't it?
We do have a traffic impact study for this project, and we'd be happy to discuss it with the.
So she could come in and actually talk it.
Or we can send it to her. It's contact us at planning.
Yeah, if you get a hold of the planning department, and they can send you.
But why can't that be discussed here, where you're actually looking for an approval on this project? That's my concern.
It's a long.
Because you're going to approve.
It's quite lengthy, is what I'm saying.
Can I finish what I'm saying, please? But again, this is a public hearing where people are supposed to ask questions and have concerns brought forth about a development that's supposed to be done.
And that's what we're doing. We're giving you the answer, but the answer can't be all.
So if you approve the project, so if you approve the project, then it really doesn't matter what the concern is with the traffic is, because the same thing that happened here years ago, where there was constant accidents, and there's still constant accidents out here with the light, that's not going to be addressed until years down the road.
I really don't know how to answer that. Would you like to, the attorney like to try, too? Because it's really addressed by the traffic study and what's in the area and how it'll be assessed.
Yes, I'll attempt to address it, if I may. So as part of the development approval process for this particular type of development, there's what's called a traffic impact study, which is submitted to Del Dot. There's a lot of traffic figures about turning radius, things relating to intersections and the amount of traffic that's going to be generated, and what additional improvements need to be made for public safety as determined by Del Dot. That traffic impact study has been submitted and that has been approved. It's rather thick. I haven't seen this one, but it's a rather thick traffic impact study due to the number of units. So in other words, a lot of the, what at least the Del Dot experts have said is that they, that the proposed improvements or what needs to be done meet their standards as it stands right now.
Okay. And then the other question I had was, when you talked about a walking path, our neighborhood was also supposed to have a walking path before, after the neighborhood was completed, where there'd be a minimum requirement for the number of lots sold before the walking path was built. Because in our neighborhood, the walking path was supposed to be built when the neighborhood finished, like 10, 12 years ago, and it just got completed.
Sarah, I think you can answer that.
Any improvements, any of the recreational improvements have to be completed by 80% completion?
And what happens? So then, if it's not 80% complete? So like, in our instance, what happened was, they started building another neighborhood, so they stopped building in our neighborhood, and that's why we didn't end up with the walking path.
What the county does.
And we also did not end up with a homeowners' association, because they didn't finish.
What the county does differently now is actually hold a bond for all of those improvements, which tends to be more of a motivator for a developer to finish, or enables the county to finish if the developer doesn't.
We have a very good planning department. I think a lot of theirs could be answered if either you call them or get your emails back and forth, or come down here and let them explain it to you in person, instead of like this right now.
Thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate your questions. Is there anyone else online? Mark?
So Mr. Bowman, you may unmute your line and give us your name and address and be sworn in by our attorney. Mr. Bowman, did you want to make public comments in opposition or in favor of this application at this time? Mr. Bowman, go on one more time. Did you want to make comments in favor or in opposition to this application? We're unable to get your response.
This is not working.
Okay, there we go.
Have you now, Mr. Bowman?
I want to, against.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Can you state your name and address for the record?
It's not working. Dang it.
We can hear you. Mr. Attorney, why don't you go to, maybe, why don't you go ahead and ask if, because we kind of started with the online, why don't we go and see if we can get it working?
Okay, and maybe, Mark, you could tell Mr. Bowman if he wants to contact the planning department with these questions.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yeah, I think we have communication problems, so we're going to just go on with the meeting. So, okay? Are we okay with that, Mr. Attorney?
Yep, we're okay with that. We tried. The one thing, we have to ask if there's anybody here, because we kind of skipped that. If there's anybody in chambers that's opposed. Because we started with the online.
Okay, because we're going back to the opposed in the chambers. And do you have questions about the plot development?
No, I don't have questions. I'm against.
Okay, well, give us your name and your address and keep it close.
Okay. My name is Aurora Gibbs. I live at 3431 South Dupont Boulevard, Smyrna, Delaware 19977.
Ms. Gibbs, does the testimony, excuse me, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, go right ahead with your opposition.
Okay. My parents are Patricia Ellery Gibbs and James Gibbs. My grandparents were Dorothy and Lawrence Ellery. I live on the Ellery Farm and have lived there continuously for 11 years now. I'm opposed to a lawyer whose name is not on the Ellery Farm deed placing an application singularly with the Kent County Planning Department for this farm. I'm against this type of development in Kent County. Also, in the 2020s, farming is rare. One in 50 kids grow up on a farm here in America. I am one of those children that grew up on a Delaware farm and an Alaskan homestead,